Good afternoon and welcome to the July 20th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Anthony Riddick, the 2022 Chair of the Board. I am joined this afternoon by Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Vice Chair, Commissioner Jack Owens, Commissioner Jonathan Cradock, Commissioner Ray Freeman, County Manager Tim Wilson, and County Attorney Philip Pitt Godwin. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Freeman to lead us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us stand.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Paul Stanbauer here, please. Father God, we thank thee for this day. We thank you for bringing us together. We thank you, Father God, for the leadership that you provide us. We must thank you for our county, for our state, and for the United States of America for which we stand. Father God, bless these citizens of Gates County, bless these commissioners, and pray that we reach the right decisions from day in and day out. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you need an agenda, in the back of the room, as you come into your right and to my left, in the back of the room, if you need an agenda. At this time, I ask for approval or adjustments to the agenda.
Make a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. And before I continue, let me just say that our clerk to the board, Jolitha Chestnut, is not here with us tonight. She's on family medical leave. We offer our thoughts and prayers to her and her family. I just want to make note of that. We would do our best to capture especially all the actions that we have to take. I'm going to be taking notes, and I'm quite sure we can look at the transcript or the videotape and see what went on in this meeting so she can capture the minutes of this meeting. I just wanted to make note of that. So as you move around and see that she is not here. Now, we have an introduction of new employees. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, there have been at least one, possibly a couple, that I think maybe we relate on getting Marty up here. Introduction of new employees to the Public Utilities Department. And I asked the Director of that department, Mr. Brad Arnold, if he could come forward with his new employees and introduce them to the board and the public.
Good afternoon, Board. My name again is Brad Arnold, Public Utilities Director. I'd like to introduce you Scotty White. He's a new employee. He was hired last Wednesday, the 13th. He also comes from Eaton, so he followed me over here. So he has a few certifications and a few more to get, but we'd like to welcome him onboard and let him introduce himself.
How are your certifications put in what divisions?
I have Seawell, which is on the waterside. I have B-Distribution, and I have Collections to Wastewater.
Excellent.
Any other readings or questions from Mr. White?
Welcome. And what position will he be holding?
Well, he's currently a utility operator at this point.
Okay. Yeah, because of his certifications and his experience, we are looking at him to advance in the department, probably become one of the division managers that we're talking about, that mid-level management position. We think he'll fit very well into that scheme.
Well, you made it come over here, but you did it on your own. I come on my own.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. White.
I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have Child Support Awareness Month Resolution. That's going to be read by Social Services Director, Mr. Willie Smith, and he has a guest with him also this afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. Great afternoon, Chairwoman, County Manager, Commissioners. I have with me myself, Willie R. Smith III, the Social Services Director, as well as Alden Miller, who is Young Williams, our contracted child support provider, who is a manager for now in Gates County, but numerous other counties. Not going to focus on those because we're here to talk about Gates. But I just wanted to have an opportunity to let you all know about August being Child Support Awareness Month and a proclamation we would like to have submitted to the County Commissioners. And I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas Gates County is recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Gates County families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children. And whereas in state fiscal year 2001, 2021, excuse me, 2022, more than $1.1 million in child support was collected from parents of Gates County children. And whereas there are nearly 439 child support orders in place, working to ensure that more than 454 children receive financial support from their parents. And whereas the court must order either parent to obtain and maintain medical health insurance coverage for a child if it is actually and currently available to the parent at a reasonable cost. Whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes the diligent working parents who spend time with their children and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. And whereas strengthening individuals and families promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance the children's futures. And whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from their parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens. And whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks of court, sheriffs personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and enforce child support orders for Gates County children, one of our counties that is most vital, that provides the most vital resources. Now, therefore, we, the Gates County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 2022 as Child Support Awareness Month in Gates County and commend this observance to all citizens and witness thereof, the Gates County Board of Commissioners, Chairwoman, and you all. So just want to take that opportunity to just acknowledge what Young Williams is doing and acknowledging that this is Child Support Awareness Month. Mr. Miller, if you have any comments or anything you want?
Just appreciate the ability to serve the children. We appreciate, you know, the opportunity to serve the children and the citizens of Gates County, and we try our best to provide a good service for them. Thank you very much.
Glad to hear. I think our relationship with Young and Williams has got a few years on it now. I think our relationship with Young and Williams is maybe 10 years or something like that?
Yes, it began in 2010, July 1st, 2010. I was there that very day. I was actually, I've actually been working for Gates County Child Support Services since 1994.
Okay. We will get this signed and stamped and get it to Mr. Smith as soon as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Madam Chairman, while Mr. Smith was up there, I wondered if I could just reiterate what he sent out to us this week on social services.
Sure. I love it. Kill two birds with one stone.
Social Services 3, have you been able to get anyone to apply for that?
Say that one more time, Mr. Smith.
Social Services, I think it, was it Social Worker Number 3?
Yes, so we do have a Social Worker Number 3 position that is open and available. We just posted that, I believe, on Monday, if I'm not mistaken. We haven't gotten any applications, to my knowledge yet, that we've received. But we are, it is open until that position is filled, so we do hope to get someone in here, hopefully within the next month or two in regards to that.
Has it been open very long?
No, literally just posted it on Monday. If you don't mind, I will.
Go ahead.
I apologize, just so you all are aware, tomorrow, we do have an event going on at DSS, at the Social Services Office, with us and the Eastern Virginia Medical School. That was provided a grant to assist individuals with diabetes screening. Anyone who's interested in coming to the DSS office tomorrow, we're hosting the event from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., the first 50 people, I believe. If you come and get a screening, you'll be able to receive a food bag from the Auburn Mall Food Bank as well to entice some people to receive a diabetes screening. And I'll add another little tidbit in regards to that. The CDC has acknowledged Gates County as a part of the diabetes belt. That means that there are more than 10% of the population here in Gates County that suffer from diabetes. So again, we're just trying to do our part to bring the wealth to the people and let them know where they can drink from and provide some added resources and services. So just letting everyone to know, that's tomorrow at the DSS office from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
No free gasoline.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt, I was just, I overlooked something on the agenda. I just wanted to clarify, make sure. Are we having departmental report acts?
They're in the back of your, yeah.
But they will be reporting that?
Yes, if they need to be reported out, they will be reported out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have to vote on the resolutions?
Yes. As I stated, we don't have our clerk here today, so be patient with your chair. I need a vote for approval for the resolution of Child Support Awareness Month.
So moved. I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
As have. Okay. Next, we'll have public comment period. You have five minutes to come to the podium. And I have the list here. First to sign up was Wade Askew.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Godwin. I'm Wade Askew. I'm from Yore. It's nice to be here tonight, and I'm concerned about the 5-cent tax increase that y'all have given to citizens of the county. The last time I can really remember a 5-cent tax increase was when we built the DSS building and the gym at the high school. And even then, that was split over a two-year period. You gave the employees of the county a raise, but then you were so gracious, you gave them a 5-cent tax increase also. Our country, before it was founded, had three groups of people. You had the loyalists, the patriots, and the, anyway, the patriots believed that we should form our own country, and we could do a better job of taxing our people on the needs of the people rather than the taxing on the wants of someone 3,000 miles away. The loyalists, they believed that sort of the same thing, except they believed that why should we trade one tyrant 3,000 miles away for 3,000 tyrants 1 mile away? See, when you tax people on the wants, that's what you're doing. You're taxing on the same principle as the tyrant would tax people. We are supposed to be taxing on the needs. And I know, Mr. Manager, you want to have an assistant. Well, if our workload is so much for you in a county with one stoplight and 10,000 people, I'm sorry, and I don't mean to be ugly, but if that's too much for you, then maybe you need to turn in your resignation. But I can't see hiring an assistant for a county, no bigger than Gates County. And the things that y'all are hiring, or people you're hiring for, the only ones that are going to benefit are the people that you're hiring. You do taxes on the benefits that's going to benefit the citizens of the county. And when Abraham Lincoln wrote the Gettysburg Address, he mentioned our government. A government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the face of the earth. And I have seen that here in Gates County, perish from the face of the earth. Because our county is not only just taxing us in the manner of a tyrant, but it's running the county in the manner of a dictator. Citizens go to public hearings, they give you your voice time and time again. You vote against the citizens of the county. And that is, that's not the way our government operates. We are the government, the people. Y'all are the ones that manage the people. And when I sat there behind the table, we didn't have a Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, we didn't have prayer, and finally, I said, this isn't right. So I brought it up at a meeting, made the motion, we have prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Carlton, Mr. Carlton Nickens, he seconded. And I thank God that y'all do have prayer. And let's keep God in our midst. I've seen some meetings here the last few times, and God was not in that midst. God was completely absent, and that is totally unacceptable. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next is Jossel Jernigan, Sr. Oh. Anthony Saunders from Gates.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Saunders. I live at 798 Willington Road in Gates. I've lived in Gates County for 64 years. I've been a public servant for about 35 years. Change for some in a rural county is hard, but we must continue to move forward. I still see the day soon that Gates County will be like our neighboring counties, that we will have a Hardee's, McDonald's, Bojangles, Rite Aid, Walgreens, and hopefully a food line, a senior citizen facility, affordable housing for our citizens. I stand here tonight in support of the issues that this board is moving forward with to make the quality of life better for all and not for a privileged few. Continue to stay focused on the three new home replacements that we're having here in the county. Continue to give us the status on the fourth home, which I'd be willing to work with the board if needed. To address, continue addressing the aging water and wastewater system here in the county. Continue to work with the fire departments in flushing the hydrants. I believe Corr Peak flushed theirs a couple of weeks ago, so continue working with them. Citizens still have concerns about animal control in their neighborhoods. I tell people that this board has no supervision over that department. I also understand that the animal shelter has been closed. I'd like to thank the board for the budget they have provided for the board of elections, so we can continue to have fair and secure voting during the midterms. Dr. Riddick, do you have an update on the roof repair for the community center? Citizens in the county want and need change for all, for all. So keep the train moving forward and not stuck at, not stuck at the station. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to sit on the animal shelter.
The animal shelter was temporarily closed. I talked to Bob Kirby, who's the Chair of the Chilim Board of Commissioners. It shall be open, should be open during the week. It might not be full hours, but that will be as soon as possible. But I think they will have it open at reduced hours. So just to clarify, that that is being taken care of.
Okay. Next is Ann Askew from Yore.
Good evening, County Manager, Chairman, County Chairman, County Commissioners, and County Attorney. I'm Ann Stuckz-Askew from 216 White Oak Road, Yore. I do not have a planned speech. I am just a concerned citizen. I have two things on my heart. One of them is this morning, I went to the county convenience site in Rooduka. And I'm a farmer and a poultry producer. We pay taxes, high taxes. And we went down there with a few cool pads from our chicken houses, and they wouldn't let us, they wouldn't let us use them. They said, you have to go to Belvedere. Does the county pay us to go to Belvedere to drive all that way? No. But we're paying taxes, and we can't even use our convenience site for our cool pads and whatever we need. That's not fair. The next thing I wanted is that y'all want to raise taxes. Why? I don't understand. Look at all this that was put out in the county paper, March or whenever. All those delict taxes go back to 2011. I remember reading it one time. It was back to 2001. I mean, if y'all want some money, here it is. Go get it. I don't understand why we're raising taxes. And they say it's to get a county manager an assistant. Don't understand. This is a small county. I don't know who hired you, but whoever hired you needs to go to. Thank you for your time.
Patrick Martin from 400 Yore Street.
Good evening. I'm back again, as I like to do every month, except for last time. Last time, actually, was an interesting meeting, and I suggest maybe as members of this board, you might want to go back and view the YouTube videos of these meetings, because you'll see where you actually contradict yourself on some of these items y'all addressed. Most of which, one of the things that really bothered me the most because I didn't attend was the beratement and the belittlement of Ms. Hendricks at the last meeting. I counted the time from the time it started till the time it ended. It was almost 45 minutes was spent by one individual telling another individual how they should do their job. Prior to that, that same individual said to the rest of y'all, we need to get our act together, because while I'm trolling the halls of the legislature, we don't have a plan in that, a plan in place to deal with grants. So by your own admission, you don't have your act together either. And yet, you holding the candle to another person who's asking for help and says she's only a department of two. And then you turn right around and say, hey, I need, we need to raise taxes and hire somebody else to help our city, our county manager. And what was the answer was given to her? Work with what you have. Two people, work with what you have. So my answer to you, Mr. Wilson, is work with what you have. You sit down and tell everybody else to do it, why don't you do it? And that goes for everything else that happens here. You sit down and watch it over and over again. One time, you say, we don't watch Facebook. We don't look at Facebook. Then you turn right around and say, oh, I've seen the comments on Facebook. Boom. You just continue. That meeting last 45 minutes was circling, circling, and circling, circling. I got pissed off. I'm not going to lie. And yet, you're holding her to accountability, and yet, the dispatch center's still not right. You're not bringing them in here and holding them a candle under their tails and telling them, look, you got people leaving because of some individual that's making them leave. You pay all that money to hire them and train them, and then one individual is responsible for them quitting. You can ask the person that hired them. They'll tell you. I even talked to an individual who quit and told me that the other two people said the same exact reason why they quit. But you're not in here. They're not up here being grilled for 45 minutes as to why they're not doing their job. Yet you held Ms. Hendricks here under duress, and God bless her for keeping her composure, because I would have walked my butt right on out of here and quit. Who wants to work for somewhere like here? And when you treat people like that, that's not how you treat your employees or your citizens. I've been here, I've been coming here since December and watching these meetings and listening to the comments people are saying. People were against the land purchase. They're not against progress. They were against that particular land purchase. Watch one individual say, if the citizens don't want it, then by all means, they're not going to get it. But don't come back to us and say, we're the reason why I didn't move forward. And what happened the very next meeting? Boom. You voted for it anyways. And I know the three or four people that were all for it, been for it the whole time. That didn't matter. Didn't care what the citizens thought. You know, I mean, you work for us. We don't work for you. We're up here saying what we want. The time of the meeting is 5:30. I chose not to meet with my family tonight so I can make it to the meeting so I can say my piece. Nobody's addressed that. An old lady addressed, hey, how about having comments after the meeting? After you go through the whole meeting, have public comments afterwards like we used to do years ago. Haven't addressed that. We finally got water people here that hopefully can address the issue so that every Monday, every first or second Monday, fourth Monday, people aren't posting on Facebook, what happened to the water pressure? Where did the water pressure go? I'll tell you where the water pressure went. Fire Department's not draining, testing ours, they're training. They're training for the reason why we have not enough water. What's our alternative? Because we can't rely on our hydrant system. Because one of the training exercises, they almost drain the system dry. And it takes a while for that to build back up. There are solutions for it. I've heard the solutions for it, and maybe these two guys that stood up here tonight can figure it out, just like somebody else did. So, I mean, let's get our act together. Don't preach to the choir if the pastor doesn't know what they're saying either. That's all I got to say.
Willie Smith, he just left. John Taylor Kitchell, Corr Peak.
Good evening. So I got two hats again tonight. My fire chief hat. I'm happy to inform the board that the supplemental fire grant for eligible volunteer fire departments across the state of North Carolina was funded in the state budget, which became law last Monday. So we're just waiting on OFSM to start processing. So I would sincerely like to thank those of you who reached out to a legislator. It'll buy much-needed equipment. Okay, so my citizen hat on now. First, I'd like to address the meeting time. Y'all laid in the agenda, you've got some meetings, some extra meetings that you're going to be looking at, and meeting time is going to be on the table. I'm thinking 6:00, 6:30 is about a meeting time, especially considering the resolution that was passed across the road, March 2020, if I'm not mistaken, and I believe that was Dr. Riddick's first meeting. That resolution, which I believe is still in effect, said 6:30. 5:30 is a stretch for citizens that work out of town. I think 5 o'clock is, it's better than 10 o'clock in the morning, but 6:00 and 6:30, I think. think, would better serve the citizens. I hope you'll consider that. Concerning the last meeting and the 55 minutes with Ms. Hendricks, I believe much of it was unnecessary. Many topics of discussion and many of the phone calls that you all described receiving think beyond the scope of a customer service manager, and I think you were deflecting some of that on to her. It is the Commissioner's responsibility to set policy and the County Manager's job to implement it. I think much of what you have tasked Ms. Hendricks with in regards to policy adjustments is beyond the scope of the position, primarily the collection of debt accounts. You formed ad hoc committees before to handle such issues, and with the multitude of issues with this department, I think this is certainly worth such a committee. So the service fee has come up, and I did a little research. And in the customer service policy, right here where it lists the fees, it says, "Service fee, if not paid by 5:00 p.m., 26th day of the month." And then flip back a couple pages. Under Customers' Rights, Part of Discontinuation of Service on Number Four, if a customer is scheduled for disconnection due to non-payment, they will be removed from the disconnection list, provided their water services have not been disconnected in the previous six months. The service fees will be rolled over to the next month's bill. I think any reasonable person could take this service fee as a penalty. Anyone pay the bill on time, they got a penalty, just like any other service. Now, it could probably have a better name than service fee, but to me, reading this, maybe because I've been to so many meetings, I've heard about this over the last two decades that it's more clear to me. So another thing about the Water Department that many people might not know, and I may be telling you all old news, but December the 4th, 2017, the Commissioners decided that three million readers from Customer Service would be transferred to the Water Department. The transition will allow for more staff to repair leaks, conduct field work, and update documents, and that came in effect January 1, 2018. So my final topic. I feel you made a grave mistake in approving most of the new positions last month in the budget and otherwise, especially since they were not funded and will require budget amendments and tax increases next year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
That ends our public comment period, and some of those points that were brought up will be addressed later on during other comments and updates, as noted in your, on your agenda. Next, we have old business, continued discussion recommendations on water billing issues, and that will be handled by our County Manager, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Talking to the mic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just first to let you know that Ms. Hendricks was not available to be at the meeting this week. She is, she is off on approved leave. But she did submit a report for your consideration, and that is in your packet. You had asked her to, I think, in summary, was to take a look at the billing, and since the board had removed all penalties by, from the water bills by action of last October, and there was still language pertaining to penalties on the bill that the billing be amended or changed so that all references to penalty be removed, so there wouldn't be any confusion on that, and also to bring back a draft plan of recommendations on a number of the issues that were talked about, such as should there be an application for the service? Should that fee be? Things such as a security deposit in the fees on that and so forth. She has submitted a report for your, a memorandum for your consideration. Another thing that that was requested was a meeting with myself, the County Attorney, and the Finance Officer. That meeting did not occur since the last meeting. So with that, I will leave you be the judge in terms of the adequacy of the report. I was surprised to find that Ms. Hendricks did not amend the billing statement to remove references to penalty, but she has recommended to the board that a $60 penalty be imposed on water customers who are 10 days delinquent on the payment of their bills. And I think that that was not responsive and probably contrary to the instruction of the board. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And I'm glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
I'm looking at the agenda, and I see that right after that old business, there's a new business, a request for refund of assessed water service fees by the County Manager. What I'm going to entertain is for that report and fold that into the report from Ms. Hendricks because all of it is connected as far as what was assessed, what was requested, when it was requested, how it's been presented now, and how we get a path forward. I will say that I talked to the County Manager yesterday, and I asked him to take control or head up the ad hoc committee that was formulated before with him, the County Attorney, the Finance Director, Ms. Hendricks. But now we're looking at the County Manager getting this resolved. Why is this important? You're going to hear during my update about water and wastewater, about the application of millions of dollars that we're getting ready to apply for to upgrade and fix and expand our water and wastewater. One of the first things I heard when I became a Commissioner even before was the 40-year-old failing water system in Gates County. It's still failing. We're trying to staff it up again, but we need millions of dollars for repairs and expansion. So instead of going around and around, I heard that before, we're not going around and around anymore. I've asked the County Manager, he's the head administrator in this county, to take his staff, and on that staff, to put people in, on that ad hoc committee if necessary, inclusive of the ones that's already there, and get this done. When we do this application for millions of dollars, we have to have certain things that are evident, documented in our policies and procedures in this county, and they are not there. We are supposed to be collecting, just like the young lady said about, we have tax money, we're not, I mean, water bill money that we're not collecting. We're not collecting that money, even if it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. He's going to ask us in a few minutes for approval to credit back the $60 that was not supposed to be collected, and that total is over $21,000. We have more monies that we have not collected, and we're not collecting accounts that have not been closed, and we have a statute of limit of, I think, four years. If we don't collect it, we lose that money. So sometimes I think people don't understand, and sometimes I think I don't understand. I'm just being honest. I can't, I don't know what you want. You want the water and wastewater fixed because it's 40 years old. We're trying to get it fixed, but to get it fixed, changes have to be made. You can't get around that. And when I talk about in a little while about the State Water Infrastructure Agency that we met, that Ms. Hoffler and myself met with two weeks ago in Hurtford all day, it was a funding, funding summit. We also had virtual meetings. I was the first one to attend one, and then the next meeting we had was with the County Manager and Brad, Brad Arnold, the new Utilities Director. And then the final one was in Hurtford. I've been on the phone today, and you don't want to hear this. No, I is a personal now, but when I say I, I'm talking about as representative of this, of this governing body up here. I didn't put myself in this chair by myself. I was, I was elected unanimously by this governing body. If I was not, then I must have been in the wrong meeting. And when you have a chair that must sign off on documentation that we are noncompliant, and I share that with everybody on this board, don't I? Just nod your head if not. I see documentation that I have to sign off. Sometimes I have to sign off with the County Manager, and sometimes I'm the only one can sign because I'm the lead elected official in Gates County. So no, I don't go on Facebook, but people take screenshots and send them to me, and I see them. I, I'm trying to make a, draw a picture here. People are making this about me, and I asked you two years ago not to make it about me, make it about the county. Because whatever I do around this table, the Commissioners, every last one of them know it. Every last one of them know everything I do because I either tell them before I go or I send them updates. I sent them one today. I send them updates all the time, and they can call me, text me, come by, whatever. So I want to make it clear before I turn it back over to the County Manager for him to make his, finish his report. I do not do anything in isolation. I do not. I work with the County Attorney quite often with contracts, making sure I don't sign anything that will put us in jeopardy. You've seen Mr. Governor here more than you've probably seen him in a long time because we rely on him as our legal opinion, legal opinion. At the end of the day, this governing body must do what we think with the documentation we have. We listen to you. We've heard you. But when change comes, sometimes it's not easy and you don't understand, and I've told them, we have not done a good job of explaining what is going on. And from this day forward, you're going to hear things that you need to know, that we know, and we assume that we didn't have to share with you. That was a mistake. That is not going to happen again. And I assure you of this, some things you're going to hear, you're not going to like it because we don't like it either, but you're going to understand it or you choose not to. This is a representative government we have here in the United States. You elect us, you put us here, we do the best we can with what we have. We have no resources to waste in this county, and we have not done some things years ago before any of you probably even knew about it that should have been done, and now it's costing us because we did not do it. And the state is trying to help us, but we got to put people in place, we got to put policies in place, we got to get things done before we can apply for those millions of dollars. We qualify for $15 million. I hope it doesn't cost that much. We don't have that kind of money. And this application has to be done by September the 30th, the 30th. It has to be in. And I'm not going to sit here as the chair and continue to go round and around trying to get things out of this county to put in that application so we can have the best chance we can to get that money to fix what I thought you wanted to fix. And I still believe you want to fix it. You just don't like the way it's going to be fixed. Well, we're going to fix it, and before I do my updates, and after I do my updates, and after everybody's had their say, I'm going to assure you of one thing. Hear me good. That application is going to be in by September 30th. I have to write it myself. It's going in. We can't do this anymore, distracted by this and that and the other, and they're telling us at the state level, "We've got the money. Apply for it. They're going to help us write it. It's not going to cost us anything. I got a list today of engineers to help us write it." I'm going to share that when I send it to the Commissioners. I haven't sent it yet, just got it. Can you hear my passion? Listen to it. September 30th is when it's due. For 10 weeks, this is July the 20th, and we're sitting here going around and around again about water and wastewater. Now, if you don't understand my passion, then you don't understand me. Not one of you have called and talked to me. Not one of you. Just like I'm the chair, I have one vote and one vote only, but I'm the chair. And I have to go and do what I have to do. Thank you, Mr. Kitchell, for saying that you got the $35,000. I'm aware. When you save what you need, if we can do it, we do it. So, Mr. Wilson, I want to hear what your actionable item you need to move forward and what's to pan forward. And why?
Are you speaking on the new business item?
The new business item, the new business item and what I just said about moving forward.
Yes. Well, on, going back to May 12th, I, along with a number of Commissioners, had received a number of phone calls concerning the assessment of a service fee on their accounts, and they did not understand why that was on there, and they could not receive explanation on that. And I did look through the Customer Service Policy Manual to see if service fee and some other terms were defined or there were examples of them given, and there weren't. And it's my belief that if you're going to charge a citizen a fee, or whether it be an application fee, a penalty, or so forth, that there should be clear basis for that, you know, that the citizen should, you know, understand, you know, why that is being assessed. I instructed that there were to be no further service fees issued by Customer Service until the, the matter of the service fee could be resolved. When I came across the June monthly report, I saw that service fees had continued to be issued. There were service fees issued to 175 customers in one month, and in a second month is May and June, there were three, 189. In total, there were, there were 364 customers that had still been assessed service fees totaling $21,840. Those service fees and the fact that there had been a suspension on them was also discussed at the board meeting, and as public information, you know, I want the public to be able to understand and rely on what they hear at the Board of Commissioners meetings. So I did request, once again, that no service fees be assessed until the matter was resolved. And part of that was part of the action plan that was requested in terms of the policy. So these things could be made clear, both for staff's sake in implementing it and for the public understanding it as well. And I think it's, in all fairness, that these customers should be refunded, those $60 fees, as it had been publicly stated that those fees were not going to be assessed until service fee, because service fees actually are not defined in the policy document. And it was my opinion that it was not a fee, that it actually had the effect of being a penalty. And the state statutes are very specific about the issuance of penalties, when they can be issued, in what amount, in what circumstances. So I thought it was inappropriate from that standpoint as well. So you do have a complete listing. I asked her to provide a list of all of the customers, their accounts, and so forth, so that these accounts could be credited. In, in an email I received, I believe it was dated July 14th, Ms. Hendricks did readily admit that it was, she had made a mistake in still having those fees placed on those bills. So I don't think there's any objection from her on this re. So I don't think, um, there's any objection from her, um, on this refunding. And I would respectfully request this board to, uh, to make that refunding. And I ask that to be a crediting to the account, because I think some, some of these have been paid, some of them have not. And I think if the accounts are credited, then that will take care. We don't have to try to segregate out who's paid, who hasn't paid. They'll all be made whole one way or the other. So I, I do wish that, that the board would do that, because once again, I think, you know, a lot of it is the principle that, you know, what the public hears from, you know, from these board meetings, they should be able to place reliance on. And as that, this matter was publicly discussed, uh, I think it's even more important that these, that these refunds occur. And the, the, the policy document, the customer policy document, it, it, it does need to be looked at. There are some things that, that need to be better defined. As I advocated, I think there should be, uh, an application fee. I think that there should also be, you know, a, uh, a security deposit, uh, of moderate amount, and that may help, uh, with a very large number of people who have just literally skipped out on their last payment. Um, and in the absence of a security deposit, that's a very easy thing to do. And sometimes it does become a, a practical matter, you know, for the, for the county to try to, you know, track these people down and, and try to, try to collect these fees. So I, I, I do advocate that as being, uh, part of the new plan. What we also had the issue of, that there were, you know, quite a few open, accounts where people had left, but they were still open, and those accounts needed to be closed. And the policy document is instructive that whether it's by action of the county, it's like an enforcement action, whether it's a forced or a voluntary cessation of the water service, uh, once the service has been discontinued, that those accounts are to be closed. And if there's a balance in the favor of the customer, then that may, that money is to be immediately refunded to the customer. And if there are still monies owed to the county, then the county is to take, uh, any and all necessary legal means to try to collect those monies owed the county. But once again, there, there does come a practical matter, depending on how much money is out there that we're trying to seek, uh, and putting in, you know, the time and the money to collect it. So I think that needs to be in the policy, and that's really a policy decision by this board as to where you would want to set the limit, just like the tax department has a limit, uh, of, you know, I think it's a dollar, you know, that what they will or will not pursue. But I think it's also important from an enforcement standpoint. You have many ordinances, many laws, and it's part of the business of government to make sure that its laws are enforced properly and adequately. And it's, and it's not a profit margin, it's not necessarily a business transaction, it's the business of government. And yes, there is cost, uh, at times in seeking enforcement, whether it be non-payment of bill, whether it be a building, uh, or zoning violation. No, there is not money made on that, there is money expended on that. But that, but that is, that is part of the cost of enforcing the rules, the policies, and the regulations that this board adopts.
If we were to, um, if we were to adopt an application fee and a security deposit, would be the kind of thing that we'd have to have a public hearing on, I'm sure, because we'd be changing.
You, you would not have to have a public hearing on the actual application form itself or the surety, but you would have to have a public hearing if the application has a fee, which I believe it should be, to cover some of the incidental costs that occur with both the opening and the closing of an account. Uh, and also the, the surety amount, um, the deposit. Yes, I think, you know, as the county attorney will tell you, any, anytime, you know, governing body is looking at either creating, uh, a, a fee or a charge, or changing what you're currently, uh, charging, uh, that does require a, a public hearing before you can take formal action on it.
Regarding the, um, the collection, uh, or the returning of the funds for the penalty, is that something that, um, the timeline on that, you see that happening? When?
Uh, that, that would have to be something that I, I would work with, uh, in trying to put that policy document together. Mr. Arnold has a wealth of knowledge, um, where places he's worked before, who, that have had some of these very things put in place.
Crediting accounts.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, I plan on, on trying to work with him very closely to, to, uh, you know, he's got a lot of experience, so.
Tap into it.
That's right, absolutely, put, put that experience to use. But, but when it comes to the, the issue of how small is too small to go after, that's something that staff would recommend, but that is something that this board, I think, needs to set that amount.
Okay. So I'm hearing, $60 service fee is what's diffusing, there's a lack of verbiage in the policy on service fee versus we did away with a penalty. We got a service fee, right? What is lacking in the, in the policy? What it should say, or what it should define? What is it lacking?
It's, it's lack, lacking any type of both, um, service fee and even reconnection fee, which in itself is fairly self-explanatory, but it, but it still should have a brief definition. You know, the, the water department or public utilities can have a number of different fees. We just have a service fee, and that is for the rendering of a service. That is not a penalty. If you're going to issue a penalty, it needs to be identified as a penalty, because once I, as I said before, the state statutes are very specific on fees and penalties, and they do make distinctions between fees and penalties. And we need to be doing the same thing in our policies, uh, and ordinances. I, I did research, I looked at our county code, I looked at the customer service policy, I could, I could not find definition or adequate reference to that. And not only do I think that we need to have a fee, that, you know, a, a definition for it, but there should be, in, in my opinion, probably three or four different types of fees, because not, not, not all actions that the utility department may take cost $60. Some, some may be far less, some may be more. So I'm very open to the idea of, and that's where it'd be very good to talk with the director of that department, you know, the different things, whether it's, you know, doing a reconnection or disconnection, or you have to go back out and do another meter reading, or, you know, that there could actually be a schedule of service fees at different times. But first of all, it needs to be defined that we do charge service fees and for what purposes, and then put in our fee ordinance that just, you know, I'll just use the example because it's so readily understood, usually you have a host of zoning fees and building permit fees, because some of them take much more time, some of them take advertisement. So you, I think the fees should be commensurate with the cost. You know, we shouldn't be undercharging or, you know, undercharging or overcharging, you know, on the fees. We should try to find a fee that, that fits the actual cost of the service.
So if it's a penalty fee, it should be stated as a penalty fee?
Yeah. And, and that is actually something, I mean, I just did receive this, and as I said, uh, sometimes the statutes can be very specific about fees, uh, when they can be imposed, in what amount, how many times. And, uh, Ms. Hendricks has proposed a $60 penalty, um, after, after 10 days. I would, I would want to speak with the county attorney, just to make sure that the imposing of a penalty at that time and that amount is something that's actually allowed by the state statutes. As, I know the board is familiar with the term, but I know a lot of people, you know, the public may be, is that, you know, we're called a, a Dillon Rule state, and that means that the county only has the powers and the abilities to do what the state statutes specifically enable and say you can do. And that's why it's important that every time, you know, we come up with an idea, we may think it's a great idea, but if it's something that is not provided for in the state statutes, or contrary, you know, we're, we are stuck, so to speak, uh, with what the General Assembly adopts in, in Raleigh. So we would need to investigate that with, with any of these fees, especially when it, when it comes to penalties.
So October of '21 is when this $60 fee was recommended to the board. They took action on it and adopted it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Shouldn't that verbiage have been taken care of at that time?
Yes.
Before we adopted it?
Yeah, at, at that time, there, there were, there were two things that were, well, there was first one singular thing that was trying to be accomplished there. I just arrived here, and there was a committee of the board that had concluded a report on water issues, and one of them was, um, the billing about, and a lot of that tracks back to the U.S. Mail. Sometimes it was taking a lot, a long time for people to get their bill, and then they would mail the bill in, and it would take a long time for it to come in. It wasn't the two or three day type thing anymore. And through no fault of anybody's, sometimes the bill was received after the 15th, the due date, and they were being assessed a 10% penalty.
Postal, the postal issue.
Yeah, it, it was. It was, it was a matter of, um, you know, how quickly, or rather, how slowly it may have actually arrived to the customer, and then the amount of time it came back. What was agreed to was that while you can assess a 10% penalty after the due date, you don't have to. So the penalty was eliminated. And what that did, it provided 10 more days of opportunity for a bill to come in by mail without being subject to penalty. Now, the cutoff date 10 days later, that stayed the same, and I think I even tried to emphasize at the last meeting, that I did not want the public to think that the new due date was the 26th, or we may fall right back into that same loop, that people get their bill, they think I have till the 26th, they don't mail in till the 20th, we get it on the 28th, we're already into a time where we can disconnect the service. And so I don't want it to become a problem that they were paying a penalty to where now they're actually being disconnected, because even with a $60 penalty after 10 days, we still have on the books a $60 reconnection fee. So a person would actually be paying $120 to have their service reconnected after 10 days, plus whatever the bill was at the end.
One being a, um, penalty and the other being a service fee.
Yes, a reconnection fee. And that wa, and that is physically, you know, the cause that public utilities does have to go out there, you know, make a trip to that location, reconnect the service, you know, get the correct meter reading reported. So there is actually, you know, a, a service that's taking place there that we do charge a fee for.
Commissioner Freeman, I, I heard you out of this ear, you were trying to say something. Excuse me, gentlemen, but he's been waiting patiently.
I didn't want to interrupt, but I think, I think he's covered a little bit, uh, from also what Commissioner Craddock said. But one, one question that still lingers just a tad is, is, um, when that assessment is given back? In other words, when the credit is gone to the account? Is it anything addressed if that individual then leaves? Uh, is it just go to that account, or they, would they be written a, a voucher or check? Or does they leave the county, but it's credited back to their county?
Yeah.
Is there anything to address that?
Well, I, I think it will be addressed, because, because right now, if somebody hasn't, because right now, that showed as money owed, and if it's credited, it just simply takes it, 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 it nullifies it from the bill. So it's not, it's not as if it's going to be $60 and they, and they leave, and they're going to be paid $60, because that, that $60 owed should be sitting on that bill, and it will, it will negate the, crediting that will just negate.
I understand that. I do see where some, you know, were, were fined that, and they paid that.
Yes.
Paid over that.
Some have paid, correct.
So if they paid like $200, but yet they left next month, and that is credited to that account at $200, so $140, what happens to that?
Well, like I said, with this, if they paid that $60 service fee for, for May or June, with it being credited, that's the same as giving the money back to them. They get it back. If they, like I said, they have a $200 balance, they're not, they're not going to get $200 back, they're only going to get $140 back.
But, but what I would say is if, if they leave, if they, for some reason, are not satisfied with our county, and they move to Choone County.
If they close their county, they will get refunded.
Will, will that be written in a voucher, or how, or does that stay on that account that, uh, and, and not gone back? Because we have seen in some of the county government stuff where monies have been owed folks for some period of time. Is there anything, did you figure, do you have anything to address that?
No, I mean, I'd have to take a look at that a little bit closer.
All right. Excuse me. So we went from $40 to $60 in October of '21, and we, I'm saying we, part of the board, decided to take the penalty verbiage off of the.
Yes, to.
But now we want to put penalty back on it. It's what's confusing me.
That's, that's what's being recommended by, by Ms. Hendricks. I'm not, I'm not recommending that. The, the reason that the other fees, uh, the director at the time, Mr. Hedgepath, he, he said the actual cost of reconnection and some of the things that they were doing, um, he recommended that that fee be, um, brought up to $60 along with the service fee. So, so that, that, that also came into play. At that time, we, we had not received, at least I had, and I don't know if any commissioners had, we had not received complaints about the imposing of the $60 service fee after 10 days. So that, that issue was not addressed, because there was no complaint that we were aware of at that time, but those complaints started coming in a few months ago. I, I wish they had come in, because then we could have tried to tackle all of that, but.
That's what I'm, I'm slightly confused with, because all of a sudden, we're having an issue with it, and we've been charging it since October. So if, this is just me thinking, I'm just, if we do away, and I understand that, they weren't supposed to be charged, I understand, given them, but are we going to have to go all the way back to October? If we relinquish them from, from now for the last three months, or looking at suspending them, if we're suspending them and the verbiage is not cor, correct, how can we charge for all the way back from October?
Well, I, the, the reason I did not do that, I was not aware of the problem. I didn't know if there was a problem. If the board wants to go further back, you may go, you would probably be going back further, looking even at the $40 that, that was charged. What I did was go back to the date where it was first brought to my attention.
Correct.
There is an issue, this issue needs to be addressed, we need to halt the imposing or the assessment of this fee, and, and that's, that's why I just have done it for the last two months, because that's what.
That's, that's understandable. Uh, so, government body setting a fee, to do away with the fee, does the board have to take action on doing away with that fee for, until we get everything figured out? take action on doing away with that fee for, until we get everything figured out?
No, you, you can, you can suspend collection of that, is, is my understanding. And, and that, that's why I asked that it not be collected, because there, you know, there's dispute or confusion as to is this being properly assessed or applied? So what you're doing is you're, you're just pausing that, that collection. But if you do wish to, you know, actually change, because right now on the books, it's as a $60 service fee, a $60 reconnection fee. If either one of those are changed, yes, that would require a public hearing. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not talking about abolishing service fees. Actually, I think it's an opportunity to, that we actually define what a service fee is. And I think that there probably be, there needs to be more than just a singular cost, because as I've stated before, there are different services that I'm sure have different costs associated with them. And I think we should try to make the cost commensurate with what it's costing us to provide it. And, and yes, that, that would require advertised public hearing.
Okay, I'm, I'm, Ms. Hoffler is, I see her, she hasn't spoken. I'm trying to get everybody a chance to speak before we vote on the whatever we're going to vote on for the county manager. To just give everybody a chance to weigh in. I will say that that's the reason I asked the county manager to get the committee together to bring back those questions or the answers to the questions that I'm hearing around this table. Not going to, yeah, I know, the sun.
Commissioner Blaine.
Yeah, we need some blinds.
But the blinds are on.
Well, don't, don't get distracted with the blinds and the sun. Okay.
I know, I have.
Stay focused, go, Ms.
Commissioner Owens and I did a study of the Water Department and all, and I went through my notes and I took down, we changed constantly in the last two, from March 16th, 2020 to January 19th, 2022. We have pages where we have been all over the board. We have suspended, we have.
COVID-related changes.
Yes, changes and all. I do think, I think the policy as written now is very confusing with the terminology. I do think we need definitions. I do not like the term service fee. I mean, in a way, I, you know, you need to know what it's being charged for. And I do think that we have to make sure that, you know, we've been kicking this ball of rain for two-plus years. We need to settle it. Let's get it and go finish it up and move on concerning that. I do think the ideas about the reconnection fee, that makes sense if somebody's gone out there and disconnect, you know, for it. So this, we just need to sit down, put our heads together, get the ad hoc committee together, give us a proposal and have done with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffler, for recognizing that. And, and we do, and we have a term for that. We don't use it very often, and that's KISS, Keep It Simple, Sir. And, and that, so.
Okay.
So, so.
But it should have been, the back of the bill is where I have the issue, that could have been changed easily. We changed it, I mean, the thing started with the bi-monthly stuff, that deal, the back of that deal should have been changed immediately.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
And, you know, it's unacceptable, six months later, it is still not changed.
So I've been over here since December, as most of you know, water bills.
Okay.
Let's, let's.
Yeah.
Let's figure it out. If we need to suspend all service fees until we can figure it out, let's, let's do it.
That's what, that's what we're doing.
I know we, I know we, we voted on it, we brought it in October, service fee was fine then. So let's figure out what we want to do. And I would, if I need to put in a formal motion, I would like to suspend all fees until we get it figured out, so we can stop confusing the public.
We have another.
If that's a motion, no.
No, 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 stop.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have my clerk here, so I'm trying to remember what to do. In the agenda, we have, we have one thing at a time, okay? We got to decide if we're going to credit back, because that's the action that's in our, on our agenda, are we going to credit back the, what, $60 to the citizens that have paid?
That total being 21,000.
We had asked for them.
That, that total is 21.
That's 21,840.
21,800, what, 21,000?
Forty.
$840, the credit back to the citizens who have paid. And if we find that maybe somebody, you know, paid it, I mean, didn't pay it, you know, we can work that out with his staff, Mr. Wilson's staff. That's the motion that's in the packet first, and then we can entertain any other motion that is, that's new that you want to put forth this Board.
Well, I make a motion that.
Because that should not have been charged, because we had said we were going to suspend that.
So what now?
That, that $60 should not have been charged.
And I'd like to comment, just to, as, as we're discussing that part, Ms. Henderson, outstanding job getting all this together. That's a lot of, a lot of material to get together, and so that someone such as myself can look at this and analyze it. So I want to thank her for doing that.
Okay. What's the motion as far as the, I wrote it down. Request approval of crediting the citizens that paid the, the $60, what is it, penalty? Is it a penalty? I got to get it right. Paid the $60, credit it back to their account.
The improperly assessed.
Improperly assessed.
Because you said we were not going to collect it.
Because that's, that's important for the auditors. Improperly assessed, $60, credit it back to their account.
So moved. Second.
Wait a minute, moved by credit? I don't write as fast as you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so you have your action that you need to move forward on that.
Yes, and, and just, if I may, Madam Chair, is that, is that I did issue a directive to staff that this fee was not to be issued on May 12th. I did copy that to all of the commissioners. Might ask Mr. Godwin if he thinks that, you know, if that suffices, you know, to, to keep that in place, that, that will not be assessed until it's resolved by this Board or if it actually requires an action by the Board for its continuation.
Mr. County?
I missed it, I'm sorry.
Do we need, do we need an action or will the, what he, but I don't want to speak for you, but what he's asking is, with the directive not to charge it, be enough to go forward and not have a second motion to, what was your?
Yeah, I, I had administratively issued an order for that to be suspended. And when I did that, I did copy all the Board members and inform them of that action being taken.
That may be sufficient, but while we're all here to cover bases, I think a motion and then a second and a vote would, would be good too.
Okay. Commissioner Craddock, make the motion.
Yep, I made the motion to suspend all fees until, water fees, dealing with billing of Water Department, until.
The service fee.
And, and, all right, let me, let me start over.
Okay.
Make a motion to suspend all fees except for normal water billing for the Water Department until this issue is resolved and voted on by the Board and approved by the Board.
Would you like to make that specific to service fees?
Service all fees, all.
Because we have reconnect, because we do have like reconnection and other fees.
All fees until we get it figured out.
Okay.
No confusion.
Okay.
Define definition.
I'll second that motion, the motion's up.
Okay, I've got, I've, I got a motion by Commissioner Craddock and a second by Commissioner Freeman.
Okay.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Discussion, I hear discussion.
Yes, so you're saying all, this, this is where these, for terms needs to be defined. So you're saying that reconnection should not, or the, how about installation? That's a fee?
Application.
Oh, penalty.
A, a.
Oh, service fees that we're not 100% sure of, late fees that we're not 100% sure of, anything that we're not 100% sure of what that fee means, need to be suspended until it's further defined.
But we've got to have a, you know, we've got to, we have, because, you know, applications, there's a fee and all that.
It's, it's a service fee.
If you come to the window and want a new water meter, that's fine. That's, that's penalty, penalty services, cutoff water, I don't know how else to say it all. Anything dealing with a service fee, a reconnection fee, a cutoff fee, all of them dismissed until we figure out what's going on.
I, I like the way that Commissioner Craddock put that. It may make us move a little more rapid to get this done and collect a dollar here and there.
We don't have idea, the citizens don't have idea.
Let me say this, I hear, I'm, I'm listening to the discussion, I've, I've been listening to it. I don't know how long this is going to take, because it's taken two years for us, I'm concerned, as far as rounding around, you just said, so every last one of you, we don't have two years. Remember that on September the 30th, that application has to be done, and your policies, your fees, everything has to be in that application. So this is the governing body, keep that in the back of your mind, what you're doing. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just, I'm just highlighting something that every, most people are not paying attention to. We're trying to fix the water and wastewater. Part of the fix is to that application. In that application, you must have your, the policies, whatever, whatever they are, they have to be in there. To get a policy, it's a process. You just can't come in here, I don't think, a clerk's not here, but the turn is here. Something's going to take a public hearing, depends on what it is, that's going to slow us down. Something's going to have to come back and we're going to sit around here and talk about it another hour. I'm not being facetious, I'm just trying to get people to focus that we're at a cross, we're at a crossroad here in Gates County of fixing our water and wastewater. I may agree with everything that's being said, or most things being said around this table, but I have got to get the, all of you to focus on that application. So if you can get it done, this is July the 20th, we've got 12 weeks to get everything done, ready to put in that application as we start writing it. So whatever the county manager and the team ad hoc committee put together, they have got to get this done, get it back to this governing body, whatever process, legal, statute, whatever, it's got to be done so it can go in that application September the 30th. That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm putting out there. The decision belongs to the governing body, all five of us, but be mindful from this point forward, we have got to focus on positioning this county to take advantage of the opportunity to get our water and wastewater repaired, upgraded and expanded if necessary. We've got to focus on that. All this minutia of who did what, when and timeline, it's, it's important. Don't get me wrong, don't go out and say, I'm, I'm, no, I'm not fussing. This is how I talk when I'm passionate and I can feel the time clicking behind my head. And then I'm going to be sitting here and then you're going to say, but why didn't we get the $15 million? I just want to make sure all the, all the, the, the external pressure and the internal pressure is on this table. And you understand, whatever you vote for and move forward, that's what we're going to live with. And all fees, you're not collecting any money for anything? $21,000 we're going credit back? You saw in, in June's report from the Water Billing Department, $105,000 that we can't collect. And I think there's more to come that we can't collect because the statute limits to this, so you're not going to collect any money?
I'd like to amend that motion. I've got it written out, what I was trying to say.
Okay, okay, then hold on, let me amend your motion. Mr. Craddock, read it. Go ahead.
Any fees that could be viewed as a penalty?
Okay. Is that it?
That's it, that's it.
All right. The motion on the floor is that any fee that's viewed as a penalty be suspended, right?
Yes.
Be suspended.
Suspended.
I'll second your motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Freeman. I have a motion on the floor that any fees that viewed as a penalty be suspended and a second by Commissioner Freeman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So speed.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm. I'm listening.
A decision on what we've been discussing should be, a decision should be, be able to be made in 30 minutes and brought to this Board.
Correct.
To vote on. I mean, it's just, it's just the terminology and the verbiage, whether it's a penalty or not. Or not. And it comes back and we vote on it so that we can move forward on the application. So I, I would expect to have it concise, have viewed it by email and vote on it at the August meeting. 30 minutes? I'm not talking about 30 minutes here. I'm talking about whoever's going to put this together. In 30 minutes, they should have the verbiage.
And then we should expect in 30 days maybe, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, the policies that supports it. That's the important thing. It's not about just voting here and say, we're going to do this, that and the other. You've got to have these policies approved by the Board properly, and that may take longer than we think. But if we, if we dedicate some time and just get her done, as they say, you know, get her done.
It's only three people that need to get it done.
Just get her, just get her done, bring it back, it can be tweaked or whatever, but we've got to move, you've got to focus on September 30. If you don't remember anything else I say today or going forward, remember September the 30th, because that's when that application is due.
And we won't have this chance again. We were at meetings this week.
If you can't tell.
And the money's not going to be there. So it's nigh or never. And we need the money to fix our problems that we have. And so it's either we get these grants or there's going to be money coming out of the pockets of people in Gates County. So I want to get the grant money.
While the, while the ad hoc committee, whoever the county manager places on this committee, the staff, whoever, while you're doing the policies with penalties and water, we also need to tighten up our collection. One of the things that they said during the meeting, I'm talking about the state, not me, is that we have a revenue, no, we have a cash flow and revenue recovery problem. That's why I'm adamant, they already have been in our system, looked at whatever they need to look at, they look at anything these days, and they've identified, we have a cash flow problem and we have a revenue collection problem. We've got to fix it. We are missing $200,000 in collections. You hear me how I say it? $200,000 in collections. And then we're tacking on another 21,000. We have got to stop the bleeding. It's going to be in the report if we don't put a collection policy in there. And if we say we're going to collect it, am I right, Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
It's in there, that we're supposed, it's in the policy that we're supposed to close accounts, we're supposed to collect from these people, like Commissioners Freeman said, that might scound the county, go wherever they're going. It's in the policy and we haven't been doing it. So when we write this, I'm just, so yes, watch me on YouTube, September the 30th. So now if you come back in here, Commissioners, and we don't have it done, it's on the governing body. You're going to hear some more updates in just a few minutes, because I have some updates from today's meeting that I was on Zoom with and telephone calls and emails about our Okay, I think we solved that.
Yep, I'm ready to move on.
Me too. Budget amendment requests, Chris Hill, come forth, this is the Tax Administrator, Tax Department salaries, it's in your. department salary, it's in your, it's in your packet under new business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I believe you all have the memo that I sent to you all and that it's in your packet. As you all know, we have been short-staffed in the tax department since February, we have advertised position, we have interviewed several times, we restructured and reclassified a couple of the positions in the tax department to try to get someone that will be a qualified candidate in our office. We do believe we have a qualified candidate. You'll see in the memorandum, this, this qualified candidate has been employed with the county for 10 years. The candidate does have two children in the school system and would like to stay with the county. The problem is, and has been, is the starting salary for this position, the budgeted salary for this position is listed in the memo, in the memo, that is the minimum range to the pay scale for that position, and I'm asking if we could offer that position at what is called the, the, the starting rate, not the hiring rate, the starting rate. This additional funding would come from the fund balance as there is not money funded in the tax department balance at this time.
What I see is $3,237 on this budget amendment at the bottom?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just drawing everybody's attention to that, if you look at the budget amendment from Mr. Hill, the tax administrator, it will cost an extra $3,237.
It's the only vacancy you have, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion, we accept this proposal, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Freeman, the second by Commissioner Owens. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Now, you, you, let me be, let me be clear.
Okay.
So, there's $3,237 coming from the fund balance.
Yes, ma'am.
So, next year, when we come up to the, during the budget, it's going to be a recurring cost.
That's right.
You understand that?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure, because that's a confusion too. We have budget amendments for personnel and it's not in the current budget, so we approved it, but when we go back to during the next year's budget, it's a recurring cost and it has to be identified in the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And sometimes that's a tax increase.
Mm-hmm.
You understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And you promise you'll save us so much money.
Get Zach Kias working.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you all so much.
And Mr. Hill. The next is a discussion of the second board meeting, and that's Dr. Riddick. We have been having one board meeting a month, our regular board meeting, with all the work we have to do, with all the things we have to do, all the applications we have to do, all the decisions we have to make approvals, we need to have a special meeting on the first Wednesday of every month until the end of the year. I chose that and proposed that, I did not choose it. I sent an email two weeks ago, I think, to all the Commissioners, I explained to them why we needed a second meeting, it's called a work session, a special meeting for work. We've got to work. We can't sit, you see what we're doing, sitting here trying to figure out stuff. So, I sent the email to the governing body, to the attorney, everyone, to the county manager, proposing a second meeting, the first Wednesday, and I asked them what time, because we have Commissioners that work, 5:00, 5:30, or propose an earlier time. That's what their email stated. All, everybody, I think, responded yes or fine with me. So, that's what we're getting ready to do, we're going to have work sessions. You still didn't tell me the time, ladies and gentlemen, I, I asked you which one, I think you said didn't matter or something, but.
I, I don't even remember what times you hit off.
5:00 and 5:30. And it could be earl, I said early if, if it could be worked out. And let me be clear, if we don't have the, the governing body here, you come all you want. It's got to be the time when the governing body, and I ask them, I don't set things. I'm being clear tonight because it's something, because I have not been clear when I speak. And I think people think I'm running things. No, I'm the chair. But I ask them, I propose to them all the time, and that's what I did a couple of weeks ago, and I brought it here for a vote from them. Now, to change the time for the meetings, those things are done in December when we start a new year. That's when the board sits, sits in, you know, right in front of you, and they approve the bylaws, they approve the calendar and the time. We don't, I don't arbitrarily change anything, I can't do that. I'm not all-powerful. No, I need the consensus and the approval of this board, it's five of us, not one.
Madam Chair.
So, what's your pleasure?
When we, when we meet on these, will we be dealing with a singular topic or possibly two topics?
It could be one topic, two topic, it, it may be that we cancel because we don't have a topic, but I do know it's going to be dealing with water, wastewater, the site that we just purchased, and broadband. I can assure you that one of those topics will be a work session because all of those topics are coming to fruition. There's actions to be taken, there are decisions to be made, and we cannot do it just sitting here once a month, especially when we start working on that application, and I'll talk about that in a minute.
I want to make a recommendation, I'm going to go ahead and make it a form of a motion so we can move faster. I'm going to recommend that we begin the meeting at 6:30, and the meeting be scheduled from 6:30 to 8:30, with the boards having the option, if we cover the matter that we need to cover, that we'll adjourn early, 6:30 to 8:30 on those first Wednesdays, August, September, October, November the 2nd.
I'll second that motion.
Hold on. Second.
And if need be, we can cha, change it, I mean, if it's a conflict for, at some point.
Well, if we have a quorum, we, if we need to meet, we need to meet, if we have a quorum.
Well, I know, I was just saying about the time, because I know sometimes y'all have meetings.
But if we made a motion, then.
Yeah, okay.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Owens, second by Commissioner Craddock, that we have the first Wednesday of each month going forward, August, September, October, November, and the time is from 6:30 to 8:00, it may not be, I hope we're not here to 8:30. If you do, if you do the homework that I'm going to send you, you shouldn't be here.
Good.
If you do the homework that I send you, shouldn't be here that long, okay? But if not, you're just going to stay to 8:30, 9 o'clock, midnight.
That way, this, stating, stating the motion this way, we, we have a commitment if necessary. And I'll call the vote.
Let me write that down, hold on. You heard the motion in a second, are you ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a, okay, we're setting the first Wednesday in each month as special meeting with, it's going to be a work session for the board.
Madam Chair, I'd interrupt too before we go in, I'd like to make a motion as well too, a little matter, if I may. And if I have the floor.
You have the floor.
And that is, listen to the county manager, and, and also some problems that have existed in the county and outside the county, done some research and, and really becoming somewhat educated about the authority of the 911 system. So, I'm asking the board to consider with this motion, moving the 911 center from operations from emergency management to the sheriff's office.
I'll second that motion.
Well, this has come out of the blue, I don't think.
No, it hasn't come out of the blue, no, ma'am. We've been discussing this forever and ever, and, and the reason.
It's come out to the blue to me.
Well, shouldn't, if you've been sitting in all our meetings and hearing the 911 situation.
Well, I, they have said, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me, let me just say something.
Okay.
It wasn't on the agenda, I asked for approval or adjustment to agenda, it's not on the agenda, so we're not going forward with that. I suggest that you put this on the next agenda and send whatever supporting documentation that you have. We know that during the agenda, you send, that's why we have packets. So, and if you wanted to move forward with that, then you, you are asked to put on the next agenda, regular agenda, not the special, but the regular agenda with supporting documentation. You just said you had done your research, that's all well and good, but we don't have it, and we're not going to sit here and vote on something that half the, the board doesn't know a thing about. So, therefore, that will not go forward. I look forward to seeing your agenda item in August with supporting documentation.
On what day? On what day, next meeting?
The next, the next regular meeting in August, not the special meeting, that's a work session for things we got to get done that's already on our agenda and on our books. But we're not going to put things on the agenda at the last minute without all the board being aware of what documentation and what research, research we're going to use to make this decision. So, that's, that's what is, that's legal, and that's how agendas work, you don't put things on the agenda with no documentation so that we can sit and be intelligently educated about what research you have done that we can consider in 30 days. Now, you can send that in as an item for consideration, and then we'll have time to look at it, but you must send in your request to put it on the agenda with your supporting documentation.
I will do just that.
All right.
And 911 will be doing a, and I think, is the county manager aware that they're doing a, a, if you will, an inspection on 31st of August?
I don't know what the county manager is, is aware.
No, I'll address that, the county.
You can, you can address, that's another thing. We're, we're getting into a vein here where some people know things, some people don't. And so, that is not a good way, Mr. Martin said that we don't have our act together, I agree, that sometimes we, we don't know what's going on until we get to the meeting, and that's not acceptable as a team players, it's not just assess, acceptable. So, whatever's going on in 31st, if the county manager hasn't been aware of it, then someone should have made him aware, I'm not speaking for him, I'm supporting him, not defending him, there's a difference. You have a chief administrator, administration officer in this county, and that's the county manager, okay? So, if you know things that he should know, don't assume he knows, if you in that, if you privy to that information, a simple email, phone call, come in would do just fine. But this, this, let me speak. This board is supposed to work as a team. We can't move forward when we have playing gotcha.
It's worked other times.
It may have worked, it may have worked other times, but it's gotten worse. And undermined, look, under this board, we got important work to do without going at each other playing gotcha.
Kicking the can down the road.
Kicking the can down the road, if you want it on the agenda, asked to get on the agenda with supporting documentation, and we can discuss it.
Right, and we should not make assumptions when they're not.
True.
Correct.
That's true.
And, and things that are good for the county is what we should be doing.
And things that are good for the county are voted on by the governing body, and I'm going to move on for your comments, and you can discuss it during your comments.
I hadn't had my administrative reports either, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay.
But I hadn't had my administrative reports either.
Which one you want to look at?
E-911 and Water Department. Or Communications.
E-911? Is someone here for E-911?
I don't remember, I think.
Is someone here from, not a staff member, but the county manager can speak to E-911 when I find it, when I get to it, it's in this packet.
Near the back.
Inspection, transportation, customer service, emergency management, sample.
Emergency management says.
Yeah, Gates County Emergency Management.
There it is.
Upcoming, illegal burn, staff meeting, yada, 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 upcoming, ongoing. And what is your question, Commissioner Craddock?
How, how many full-time employees do we have now?
The, the exact number? I, I do not know.
How many do we have, Commissioner Craddock, because I know you know.
I, that's why I was asking the question, I don't get into day-to-day operations.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you want to hear, a couple of months ago, the, the monthly reports were put in as informational items, that's how it's traditionally done now in just about every governing body.
I was just looking at, what he has said in the paper on 216, we had seven and eight, seven full-time, eight part-time, 510, which he talked to us about at the budget session, we had three full-time open positions, and I was just wondering where we were at on.
Yeah, I mean, we, we continue to hire dispatchers, some of them do not make it through the schools, some of them do not make the training, I mean, I do not know right now what the exact count is.
So, we don't know how many employees we got. All right. What is the minimum, do you know what the minimum is before we would have to go back? I know we didn't have enough employees at one time and we had to go to requirements.
It, it would depend on whether they're full-time or part-time status, I mean, what that number would be.
All right.
But I, but I've talked to him to, to maintain, you know, that balance, to try to, you know, to avoid that situation.
Absolutely.
I mean, I was, I was discussing that issue with hiring on an applicant with him as well as with Christie Byram, just as we concerning the hiring of, you know, that we have to try to do, and I was talking to him, what we can do to try to retain more. Also, I spoke with him and instructed him that, we've been advised that the state is looking, especially at rural localities, to combine their dispatch centers. And I've requested that the director, emergency management director, start making contact with some of the adjoining counties, because right now, we have the opportunity to try to pick on, you know, to pick on our own neighbors who, who we may be able to have a joint dispatch center, because what, what we've heard from the state is that it's probably not a matter of if, it's how far down the road when, if you do not combine into regional, then the state is very well probably to start creating regional and assigning you. So, I, I mean, Jason, right now, I, I meet with him regularly, he is, he is working on that, reaching out to the adjoining counties to see if there are any that are interested in joining and participating with us in a, in a joint dispatch center.
Okay. For informational purposes at this point, right? For informational.
Just for informational, at this point.
Yeah, this is.
Just to be informed.
Yes, I mean, this is just him reaching out just to see, you know, who may have an interest, who may not have an interest, just to see if there is interest out there, because I think it's preferable if the state's going to be moving that direction, that we try to find our own neighbors, to try to pair up with that, that we feel is a comfortable fit with Gates County. So, he, he is working on that, and that's one of the ways that we're trying to also bring some stability, just not for us, but there's other dispatch centers having similar problems, and I think that's probably been one of the reasons why the state's moving to this. Not only that, but it's also going to be a cost-saving measure for the state as well.
There is a, there is an article out there that came out this week about the national move when E-911 centers to be regionalized, and they put, they've already placed the money at the federal level and is going to funnel down to the state. Within four, I think it's four to five years, there's going to be regional push, it's not something we're looking at for to do, we're just trying to make sure we know what's coming, if it comes, if it doesn't come, that's fine. But it's out there, so don't think that we sitting here trying to do something behind anybody's back, it's out there about regionalism, and it's been out there about E-911 centers, not in Gates County, across the United States, and especially these rural areas, it's out there. And if I, I know I can find it again, I will send it to the, to the commission so they can read up on it. And Mr. Freeman, put that in your to-do list as you do your homework that you're going to be doing about the one in Gates County, add that to your list to do some research on that.
I think we, and we had discussed that at some of our meetings.
Right, you, get, get that done. Commissioner Craddock, you said it was two.
We are all concerned about.
You said two.
About proper staffing and being fully staffed.
Yes.
At the 911 center, so if we could get an email tomorrow about.
No problem.
How many positions are vacant over there?
You had two items, Commissioner Craddock, you said two.
Yeah, I'm not quite done with this one yet.
Okay.
So, I know we talked about it in our last, our budget session on 510, about a strategic technology plan, capital outlay plan.
Mm-hmm.
And we're supposed to come back at this, this meeting, and I didn't know if we have worked on it or.
No, we have not, this, this county has never had a capital outlay plan that I can find, maybe if somebody knows something more. Maybe if somebody knows something more than I do. We don't have a prioritized budget plan. We don't have a planned plan. That, if you look on their website, I mentioned it, yes, I did mention, we got a strategic plan on the website that we did last year with North Carolina Grove. They did it for $7,000. They paid the rest of it. And we implemented, we put it on the, on the website, and that's where it's been. If you look at what been talked about for years, let me, let me, let me back up. I don't wanna keep y'all too long, but I got to say some things, cause the narrative goes out of here, I don't know where it goes. We've been talking about a planned budget, a prioritized budget, since I've been here. We've talked about a capital outlay plan. We don't have one. We don't have a plan for just about anything in this county. One of the things that's gotta be in the application is a draft, three to five-year plan. Cause then, once you get the grant, they wanna know how you're gonna sustain it. That's supposed to be, you know, a capital outlay plan, okay? When we fight for grants, we don't have a plan. I'm giving you an example, I'm gonna give you an example. I had to use the Gates County Public School Systems Capital Outlay Plan to ask for that $250,000 for the community center, cause we did not have a plan or a project. You just don't ask for money. You've got to have that plan. That's why it's important that we start working on the, the application now, because part of that, Mr. Craddock, it's got to be in it. It doesn't have to be perfect, but it has to be in there. And so when people criticize that we don't know what we doing, well, we're all over everywhere because we don't have a plan and we won't settle down. No, I'm not saying we won't settle down. We have not settled down to sit at a work session and work at a three to five-year plan. We have set expectations. We have set expectations of what we expect to see done in the next few years, but we haven't put it in a plan. Now, I'm saying that because you, you wanna, you don't do a capital outlay plan in a month. You don't do a plan for a prioritized, a prioritized budget, which is a plan for the budget in a month. You don't do that, or you shouldn't. You can do anything you want, but you shouldn't. It should be a work session where we take the strategic plan, and we sit and say, what are the top three to four or five goals we wanna make with that? And then how you gonna get there? Who's gonna do it?
Look, I'm, I'm, I think you missed, I was talking about E nine one, we asked for that at our budget meeting.
We don't have a plan.
It was a two, four, five-year plan, not on the whole county, just on replacement. Replacement.
Okay.
Of our new equipment is what I'm talking about.
We have worked, I don't see her, but anyway. They have been catching, I'm not trying to support anybody or anything, I'm saying what is. And I'm not trying to play gotcha or trying to, trying to defend, I'm just trying to say what is. We have spent the last six months replacing equipment that we didn't know was broken or missing in nine one one. That's been very expensive. We have just been trying to catch up so we can be compliant, so that the state will say, okay, you can run that, that center. That's what we've been doing. I don't think we've been looking at a plan going forward, cause we still going backwards trying to get the money. And we can't get the money because we hadn't spent the money. So I think, if I'm misspeaking, let me know. We have to spend down the money we have because we weren't spending the money on what we're supposed to. I'm, I'm just saying, you, Commissioner Freeman, and Commissioner Craddock, bring back what you, what you think, you gotta, you gotta bring us something.
Bring us something that we think we need to work on?
Yes.
Myself and Mr. Owens here last month.
Went over there. Went over there.
Went over there.
Mm-hmm.
The desk broke, you can't get your legs under. The chairs or, or regular office chairs, what we said we want, wanna buy.
I hear what you're saying, because I heard that you went over there, and some of the things that we have ordered have not come in.
So that's the question, have we ordered those?
We have ordered them. I was hoping that Kim was still here. I don't see Kim, cause she's the finance director. And you know about this, this supply chain.
I do.
You know about, you know about the money. You know about everything we're trying to do. And that's another thing, I just said it before, and I know I'm gonna take a hit on you too, because I'm trying to make us understand, we got to focus, and we know something, say something, do something, and not, you know, just keep on doing it. My thing of it is, we have been playing catch-up with nine one one ever since December, when we found out, it was revealed, not found out, that we didn't have what we thought we had. And the equipment all of it was old, we couldn't replace it, we had to buy it with no money, we moved money, we still spending money, and when we order, it don't come in. It just doesn't come in, and when it comes in, we gotta get it installed. We have one IT person that's doing it, we're trying to do it. And yes, you went over there to nine one one and talked to the staff and saw what you thought you saw without getting all the information. You didn't bring it back.
That's why I went straight to Mr. Wilson with it, did we not?
Yes.
We did. We did. And it still broke, and I don't believe it's been ordered, cause I ordered a chair last week and it come in this week.
That's your chair. I'm not, let me put it this way. We will circle back around you and Freeman, Commissioner Freeman.
We'll get a list of stuff.
Y'all, y'all get your stuff together and make a comprehensive report on what you think you know, and if we know it, we can address it. And while I'm.
Yeah, just if I can, ma'am, chair. I've spoke with the, the emergency management director.
Talking to microphone.
With the emergency management director, with the supervisor. They've assured me that they are ordering and trying to get everything that they can in that dispatch center as soon as possible. Part of the problem is, everything they buy, they have to send it through Raleigh. Raleigh has to approve it. Sometimes that's a lengthy process. They've had, where they've had bids that they have gotten for equipment, that the bids expired before they could get the answer back from Raleigh. So they, they are doing everything in their power to get what needs to be put in there, but it also has to go through Raleigh for approval, and also to find out how much they will pay for these items.
I'm not worried about what it's gonna cost to pay for a chair. Not worried about what it's gonna cost for a desk. You can cut this desk right here and put it over there if you want to. It's unacceptable for them to go into work every day and cannot put their legs under the desk. I asked you, me and Mr. Owens asked you to address the issue last month. We asked you to. Put a two-by-four under there so they can get their legs under. A lady five foot one puts her knees up against the desk like that, it's unacceptable. What would happen if you come into work and your desk was like that? You wouldn't say that. We ordered a new desk for the water department. Let's fix it. I'm not talking about $10,000, I'm talking about four, $500 to fix the desk. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for a new desk, I'm asking the one bill where they fixed. That's all.
And I know Commissioner Craddock doesn't know this, and maybe, maybe, maybe another commission might know, but we gotta reduce the money for nine one one.
Then we sure did.
Because we lost $153,279.35.
Yes, we did.
So, what happened there? That's why I made that motion, and I stand with that.
You stand with your motion, put it on the August agenda with its forwarding documentation, and prayerfully, what's the name, Mr. Sample would be here, who is director of Emergency Management that oversee nine one one. Nine one one has been an issue since December, we have been wrestling with it, we're trying to do what we can to, I think, to address it. Amongst all the needs we have, is one of the most important departments we have. That's that nine one one center. That is the catalyst that keeps us safe. That's the catalyst that keeps us safe, we know that. What I'm saying is, get it together, get it towards, and see what we can do. That's part of the narrative I said, we haven't been clear in, in having updates like we should or narratives like we should. We have to start again. We have to start again.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify that I won't, there won't any illicit layer, I'm just passionate about it, that's all.
You're just as passionate as I am.
Yep.
The difference is, that we have got to work together on this. When we see something, say something, it is not done, we don't have to sit here for three hours like Mr. Martin said, you know, just back and forth. We can do some work outside this building, I hope. But when you're not, when you're not forthcoming in saying what needs to be said and then follow up before you get to the meeting, that's what makes a long meeting. I'm just saying that when we start these other meetings with work sessions, those are gonna be very narrowly focused, because we don't need to be wasting, not wasting, expending time on things that we should be doing otherwise.
And nine one one's problems did not just start in the last year.
None, none of these problems started in the last year.
Last year, so, you know, sometimes people are blamed for things that they were not here.
Yeah, like Dr. Riddick says, we, we've been kicking the can down the road.
We're kicking the can down the road, and we're gonna stop kicking the.
Because it was easy, you didn't see it.
We're gonna, look, we're gonna stop kicking the can down the road because the can is too big to kick. You can't kick it anymore. And I heard about accountability, then I'm going to comments, cause I've got some, I got, I got some updates, I got to give to you, to the commissioner I just got today. One of the issues about change, there are four, I call them the four Ps, and I'm gonna move on. You look at policies, okay? Get that right. You look at processes, okay? You get that right. You look at procedures, you get that right. If you've got those three things right and you still got problems, you look at people. Because I don't care what kind of policies you have, processes and procedures, if no one implements them, if no one's held accountable, if no one pays attention, it doesn't work. We are not at anything or anybody except moving forward. But those are the four Ps. Now, getting back to the agenda, we have commissioner and county manager comments. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Craddock.
Thank you for all coming out tonight, it's good to see all your faces. Keep the texts, phones, emails, keep them coming. I enjoy talking to each and every one of you. I listen to you, I try to do what I can. It's not always the easiest thing, might not always be, always be the right thing. But keep the comments coming to me, I'll, I'll listen. Thank you.
Commissioner Owens.
Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Saw a little bit of passion here about a few things, and that means we care. So, again, keep, keep the comments coming.
Commissioner Hoffler.
Thank y'all for coming. Certainly, I thank all of us, or I hope all of us, what is best for the Gates County and willing to work. I would just say that we have a lot of work to do. The state is very serious about these deadlines and all. If you've watched the paper, Chawan County missed out on a $5 million grant for their schools, it wasn't the schools, I believe.
Schools.
They couldn't, didn't get it in in time. And when they say in time, I mean, you don't, you can't be a day late, whatever. So it's important, we want this $15 million, we've got to have it by September 30th. And it's nigh or never, folks. The money is going to be drying up. We heard that when we were in the, at the assembly, general assembly, a couple of weeks ago. We heard it at the meeting in Hartford with various stakeholders. The money is drying up, and there's a lot of needs, and we need to get our share. So, keep, yes, we're always available to talk, and just, you know, we want the best for Gates County.
Commissioner Freeman.
Glad you mentioned that, because I think our housing authority mission was late home, and we did not receive grants for that, for a certain amount of money. Again, Gates County was, was late in, in not applying for those grants and not getting them in on time. We certainly want to keep up with that, we do need that, but we need to listen to our citizens, we need to pay attention to what our citizens want and need. Most especially, I want to congratulate our twelve-year-old and younger softball team who has advanced to the state's top level. They'll be playing in Smithfield, North Carolina, have not lost a thing, they are subject to win the state championship. So, congratulate to y'all. I hope y'all are looking and listening. Thank you for the opportunity going out and speaking to you yesterday on the ball field, the parents, the grandparents, and all others over there. Didn't see some folks, but anyway, there were plenty there. Have a good evening.
Do you wanna say something about the National Night Out?
Uh, that's August the second. Glad you brought that up, and I'm looking around for anybody. Brian Silvers is heading that up, that'll be out at the Eastern Ballpark, and it'll be August the second, it'll be National Night Out, it'll be the second one Gates County's presented, kinda led by Brian Silvers. But there'll be vendors out there and, and a lot of fun. Last year was in the rain. Still, it must've been, I'm gonna say, three to 500 people in attendance, so this year I expect there'll be more. So, thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. County manager?
Your clerk is probably gonna be out for an extended period of time, she has a very serious family situation going on, please keep her in your thoughts and prayers. And I plan on to begin implementing the reorganization and the changes in the new positions as authorized by this board next month.
Okay. My updates are toward the water, wastewater. You know that we're on a distressed system, this is not a secret, it's on the website, we got plenty of company. But we must have initial training, we have to, in order to qualify for the funding, that the millions of dollars, we must have training. I sent an email to the commissioners, I moved away from the onsite training to the on-demand training. That means they can do it whenever, wherever, they all have an internet session. I talked to the head, Jennifer Haynes, today, Haney, she's gonna, I need your email address, and I need your phone number by Friday, close of business, so I can get that to her. The training's gonna be done by the North Carolina League of Municipalities, on demand. We must have two elected officials at least, we must have the director of our facilities, Mr. Arnold, we must have the finance director, Ms. Outland, we should have the county manager trained as well. If we don't do the training, that's one of the criteria, is General Statute 159G, that's forty-five B two, that's the general statute for, to qualify and, for these dollars that we're trying to get to help our water and wastewater. Also, when I get those, I will make sure that you know what time it is and log in. So we're not doing in-person, we doing initial education training, on demand. Then there's an application training, Mr. Arnold, I see you sitting back there. Whoever does the application needs to go to application training, and that's gonna be held in Winston, North Carolina on August the ninth. So you need to, a county manager, make sure that he can, can go through that training, as well as the chair for signature, to sign off on that. And I asked Ms. Haney, did the county manager have to sign off? She said she would check to see. But I do know that you have to sign off on that application, all that grant application course, you have to have signature. So that's August the ninth, that's onsite, it's not on demand, so that's August the ninth. So I got that straight today online. I have a list of engineers that we can use, they sent me a list, it's on the website, I would give that to the county manager, so he can take a look at it along with whoever. It may not be somebody on this list that we want to do an RFP, we have to have at least three bids, so I'm gonna give this to him, and anybody else, it don't have to be on this list, but they gave me a list to start with, they emailed that today, and I'll forward that tomorrow. So we can take a list and get the engineer. The engineering firm will help us write the grant. We don't have a grant writer. We don't have a grant writer, we got to get a grant writer, and the offer funds will pay for that, that's going on the website, as well as these other positions. Okay? Moving right along. Alamo Commission has hired a person to help them with the U R P grant, the urgent repair, that we have $100,000, but they've hired a person out of Camden, his first name is Ryan, I can't remember his last name. I went to Hartford yesterday to meet with them, he's gonna be helping Alamo Commission with urgent repair. So be mindful of that. Also, they've hired a person to help with broadband in their ten county areas. Her name is Courtney Smith, she started on Monday, Ryan started on Monday. So she's gonna be the IT project manager for, for all things broadband for the commission in their ten counties. I'm announcing that I'm the project manager for fifteen counties in broadband as of June twenty-seventh. I work for the North Carolina Rural Center, I work with the attorney at the end of the table, on that contract, that part-time contract to December, I will be advising fifteen counties on how it's done in Gates County. They looked at the application we put together, they've grown a connect, they listened to me in Raleigh when I went there and presented on a panel, they called me, I did not call them. And I made sure that I didn't have any conflict of interest with not only the attorney, but in Raleigh, I mean, in Chapel Hill with their attorney, Ms. Basin. So I'm announcing now that I'm the project manager for fifteen counties of the collaborative model that we're using in this county. I'm also, I also sent an email this afternoon to all the commissioners, I think I got them all in there. all in there. No, I didn't, I got to send it, I sent it to the consultant that's helping us with broadband. They're beginning to issue the great grant, and I sent you that. It's 12 counties, they, this is the first round, 12 counties, three of the northeast counties are in there, it's Bertie, Chawan, and Hyde. But it's a rolling process, so we're going to be rolled right on in there between now and the end of August. I've talked to our provider that we chose, and he sent me an email, I'll send that when I get home, I got it just before I, I arrived here. Broadband is moving forward, wastewater and water is moving forward, housing is moving forward. The path we have taken is forward. I heard you. We heard you. Water, wastewater, broadband, and housing. That's what I heard, that's what we're trying to do. Is it the best route? Are we doing it right? Maybe not. Now I'm going to address about the, the, the new positions. We've never had an assistant manager, and maybe that's one of the reasons we can't move anywhere in the last few years. Anybody that thinks that we can fix what's broken in this county and move forward at the same time with one person doing it all, with staff that's understaffed, we know that, and we're trying to do something about that. The counties that do not have an assistant manager are hiring them, they may not call them an assistant, but that's what that is. Because that person has to oversee the day-to-day and the things we're trying to do. This county has never had an HR director. One of the first things I heard two years ago from the people, some of the people sitting right around this table was, the county manager shouldn't be the judge, jury, and executioner. I heard that, we heard that. We had a consensus, let me say this, then I'm going to ask for a journal. We had a consensus on this board of everything I just told you. The vote was different, but we had a consensus. That's okay. It's okay to have your vote, I have a vote, five votes. We're not doing anything we have not discussed before thoroughly. And anybody that understands a budget, know that if you put something new, a recurring cost in a budget, it's going to, you've got to get the revenue from somewhere. We're trying to get that done and get things moving. The land, I've heard you, we've heard you. If we don't do something about some sales tax in this county, then we're not going anywhere. You said you want all this stuff, you want grocery store. That's what I keep hearing, grocery store, this, 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 okay? That's fine, but we have to have an expansion, and we're going to take care of the businesses we can take that we have here. We're working with a business right now, trying to get more water to that business, so they can diversify or expand or whatever it is they want to do. So we haven't forgot the people that already have businesses, okay? So I understand, I'm like Craddock, he's not the only one getting phone calls, I return phone calls too. Freeman returns phone calls, Ms. Hoffler, Mr. Owens, we all get the phone calls. And I talk to people, and we, and we agree to disagree. We agree to disagree. You either move forward or you stay where you are, and that, if that's what, if that's what the majority of the, of the citizens want, to stay where we are, do it our way, the old way. It's okay. We can agree to disagree. And I hope and pray that we can keep this county slowly moving forward. And let me close with this, I know that y'all get tired of hearing me, but I'm tired of people talking for me. You look to the east, to all our neighbors, they got millions of dollars this year in appropriations, but they asked for it five, 10 years ago. They didn't ask for it in a week. They have projects, read the daily advance, I read it every morning electronically, and I see the money over there, and I see what they're doing with broadband, and how they're bringing businesses in, and expanding businesses, and new businesses, and their school system, and I can go on and on and on. They didn't make those decisions last year, you can't. You have to put it in place five years, 10 years. What were we doing five or 10 years ago? You have to go to Raleigh. You cannot stay in this, this county and think they're going to come see you. You have to go there and knock on doors and do this and do that, and ask and ask, and leave a project there with them. I left a $1.5 million ask for appropriation at, at the representative's office when we went last month. I don't expect to see any movement on that until about a year or two, but it's there. It's there, and I'm going to keep asking, and when they have the midterms and people change because of redistricting, we got to go back again. That's how it works. The money is not here, it's in Raleigh. Look to the east and see what they're doing, and you ask your friends and neighbors that live over there, ask them when they put those appropriations in, ask how long it took them to get these projects together, ask them about their capital outlay plan and all these plans, ask them, see what they tell you. And they're under attack too, because citizens don't understand. And I don't, I don't see this as an attack, I see it as you being honest and speaking what you believe, and I want you to continue to do that.